The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion.
Present.
Alderman Valmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Keys. Fourteen, present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present, we will be led in open prayer and reflection by Jose Garza with the Latinx Art Network for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Jose, if you could please come up.
Thank you. Good morning. It's a pleasure and honor to be here. I'm going to read a poem by Gloria Anduah, author, activist, and scholar. This was something that I had in mind, came to mind many, many times during the Hispanic Heritage Month observation. It's titled "To Live in the Borderlands Means," and it begins, "To live in the borderlands means you are neither hispana, india, negra, española, ni gabacha. You're mestiza, mulata, half-breed, caught in the crossfire between camps while carrying all five races on your back, not knowing which side to turn to or run from. To live in the borderlands means knowing that the India in you, betrayed for 500 years, is no longer speaking to you, that Mexicanas call you rajetas, that denying the Anglo inside you is as bad as having denied the Indian or black. Cuando vives en la frontera, people walk through you, the wind steals your voice. You are a burra, a buey, a scapegoat, forerunner of a new race, half and half, both woman and man, neither a new gender. To live in the borderlands means you put chile in your borscht, you eat ho we tortillas, speak Tex-Mex with a Brooklyn accent, be stopped by la migra at the border checkpoints. Living in the borderlands means you fight hard to resist the gold elixir beckoning from the bottle, the pull of the gun barrel, the rope crushing the hollow of your throat. In the borderlands, you are the battleground where the enemies are akin to each other. You are at home, a stranger, a border dispute being settled. The volley of shots have shattered the truce. You are wounded, lost in action, dead, fighting back. To live in the borderlands means the mill with the razor-white teeth wants to shred you off. You live, your olive red skin, the crush of the kernel, your heart pound you, pinch you roll, rolls you out, smelling like white bread but dead. To survive the borderlands, you must live sin fronteras. You must be a crossroads." Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will dispense with line item four. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to honor the Herpeneur Network, Dr. Ziegler, her husband Bishop Ziegler, Michelle Martin Bonner, and her vision to bring the Herpeneur Network to the city of St. Louis. And last night in celebration, my guest should be all of the amazing women that received their Herpeneur Award last night. It was so great to be in a room full of so many testimonies of resilience and be inspired. So again, my guest today is everyone involved and then everyone in the room at the Herpeneur Network last night. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the Board. I would like to introduce as my honored guests mighty Fourteenth Ward resident, Mr. Betts, Vernon Betts, who's the Sheriff of the City of St. Louis, as well as all our Palestinian community members that are walking in today. We appreciate you being here.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, October 30, 2023.
Members of the Board, I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 13, 2023.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 13, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C. The agenda has been placed in a Google Drive for your review.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Seeing none, we can dispense with line items nine, ten, and eleven, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 140 introduced by Alderman Aldrich, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in City Block 938 as bounded by Delmar, 21st Street, Lucas, and 22nd Street, beginning at 22nd Street and extending east to a point in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 41 sponsored by Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Board Bill 141 sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Keys, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance pertaining to the creation and administration of a property tax credit for eligible senior taxpayers residing in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill 142 sponsored by Alderman Aldrich, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in a triangular-shaped excessive portion of right-of-way at the southeast corner of 11th Street and Lucas Avenue, abutting City Block 178, same being bounded by Lucas Street, 10th Street, Washington Avenue, 11th Street in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Charter 21 of the Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 143 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorize, I'm sorry, amending ordinance number 71393, ordinance number 71504, and ordinance number 71554 by re-appropriating certain amounts specified herein in an aggregated amount of $5,823,010.47 for the purposes and with, for other purposes and within emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills. The following, I'm sorry, to the public-
Reference to committee of board bills. Sorry, my mic wasn't on.
No problem. To the Public Infrastructure Committee, Board Bill 140 and 142, to Budget and Public Employee Committees, Board Bill 141, and to HUDs, Board Bill 143. That's the extent of reference to committee of board bills.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUDs with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 143 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, I'm sorry, 133 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the city of St. Louis to execute a contract for sale of real property to accept a deed to certain real property located in City Block 2710 owned by the American River Transportation Company, LLC, and to execute a deed to ARCO for certain own property located in City Block 2709 in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, containing the severability clause. Board Bill 134 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Waco Transloading, LLC, for a period of 10 years for the purpose of interior receiving, processing, storing, and transloading cargo and/or a warehouse or a distribution center at or near 4300 South First Street with other related improvements containing the severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of Budget and Public Employee Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 109 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationship between the city of St. Louis and all employees under the medical examiner's office, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment, benefits, leaves of absence, and authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number 71510 allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following the approval by the mayor. The following board bill was reported out of Public Safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 132 sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services to fund the purchases of equipment and software for the 911 call center upgrade, appropriating funds therefore, and authorizing the police commissioner or his designate to enter into contracts and expend the funds to the extent received containing the severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Report a special committee.
We have none.
We may dispense with line item 15. Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 116 sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, an ordinance authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation to fund the purchase of three radar speed trailers to replace outdated and non-reparable speed trailers, appropriating funds therefore, authorizing the police commissioner or his designate to enter into contracts and expend the funds to the extent received containing the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 131, committee sub-sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorizing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Home Investment Partnerships, American Rescue Plan Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Fund, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 110 sponsored by Alderman Kohn, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorizing and directing the issuance, establishment, and term in negotiated sale of the Special Facility Revenue Bonds, not to exceed $80 million to finance the cost of purchasing, extension, improvement, or enlargement of special airport facilities containing the severability and emergency clauses. Board Bill 111 sponsored by Alderman Kohn, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen Apportement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller, other city of St. Louis owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, display advertising concession agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the Lamar Airport Advertising Company, which is attached here too as attachment one and made a part hereof containing the severability clause. Board Bill 112 sponsored by Alderman Kohn, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estmen Apportement, making a supplemental appropriation to the annual budget for fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024 pursuant to ordinance number 71660, amounting to the sum of $1.5 million for procurement of services listed here too as Exhibit 1 and made a part hereof containing the severability clause. Board Bill 115 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the easternmost north-south alley in City Block 792 in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 124 sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Brandon Avenue and Lindenwood Avenue regulating all traffic traveling north and south down on Brandon Avenue at the intersection of Brandon Avenue and Lindenwood Avenue containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 125 sponsored by Alderman Valmer pursuant to ordinance 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the Director of Streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic at various locations in the Fifth Ward. That's the extent of board bills for a perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the board perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green. Alderwoman Keys. Fourteen, aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to approve the board bills on the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 87 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Orion, and Alderwoman Velasquez, an ordinance repealing Section 2.08.010 of the city's code, which provides for the nomination of candidates for the offices of the mayor, comptroller, president of the Board of Aldermen, and Aldermen at primary elections, and lo thereof enact a new Section 2.08.010 to eliminate the primary requirement where two or fewer candidates file a declaration of intent pursuant to Section 2.08.050, or if two or more candidates file declarations of intent and a candidate or candidates withdraw pursuant to 2.08.400, leaving two or two or fewer candidates in which candidates, the two candidates or candidates shall advance to the general election.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 87.
Board Bill 87.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we perfect Board Bill 87. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. So just for clarity, I love when we can tell people what's going, because I know some people are asking about what Board Bill 87 is. This is the third reading of Board Bill 87. So it's been read once, it's been through committee where there was a very good debate and good speaking about, around rather, the need for Board Bill 87. First and foremost, from our Board of Elections here, we have two directors, a Democrat and a Republican Board of Director, Director rather, for the Board of Elections for the city of St. Louis, also from constituents and also from advocacy groups that advocate for fair election cycles, fair election actions here in the city of St. Louis, such as legal women voters, that I'm proud to say that we're at the table with legal counsel with this legislation. So this came as a change to Prop R. If you're not familiar with Prop R, it was a reform, a bill that passed here, was started by some individuals here in the city of St. Louis. You can research that. This is what I love about the way we legislate down here is that all of our meetings are recorded, so you can go back and watch what people have said in the committees, in the board hearings, in our full board meetings, and reference that, right? So that you can do your due diligence when you want to move forward on legislation and how we legislate on behalf of the greater good of the city of St. Louis and not individuals. So again, with that being said, Board Bill 87, if you're familiar with what the ranked choice, what kind of like the same ranked choice voting is, so in the city of St. Louis, we have primaries and generals, and the change came with Prop R that you can, instead of it being partisan, it went to nonpartisan. So instead of you having the partisanship vote in the primary, now it's nonpartisan, as many people can run, which is great. That's great. And then the two top people from that first election then run again in the general election. But what happens when you have only two qualified, qualified candidates in that primary? It's common sense. They go and advance to the general immediately, no matter what the vote county is, no matter what the ward and precinct county is, no matter what your feelings are about a candidate, they both advance to the general. This is the opportunity for the city of St. Louis to take on some better practices in this reform that, yes, it was voted on by the city of St. Louis. But again, if you go back and research some of those meetings, there was a lot of misinformation. There was a lot of confusion with that, and if you go into some communities and neighborhoods here still to this day, they're upset about some of the things that happened with Prop R. That, that's, you can't negate that. You can go to that and do that right now, but that's not what this is about today. This is about one change, that if there are only two qualified candidates in the primary, then they will go ahead and advance to the general, saving, one first and foremost to me, saving the city of St. Louis money. Saving the city of St. Louis money, because when you run those two elections, when you already know you're having that election, elections cost money. Every election costs money. Every election counts. But let's have best practices in how we're doing things. If you know for a fact that these two candidates are advancing to a general election, then why not save the city those dollars? And why not have a better and more efficient election cycle and have them both just advance to the general election? So that's what Board Bill 87 does. There was, it seems like a lot, but it's really a knot. And again, we talked about this in committee, we talked about this before. As a matter of fact, this is not the first time this legislation has tried to bend into So with that, I'll be open to any questions or any conversation from my colleagues.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth, and then from the fourteenth.
I know. I feel the need to rise on this particular issue because everybody who's been here for a while know that I wrote treatises about how ignorant that previous board, Proposition D was, how it was not fair, how you were going to waste money, and I have all the emails to share with all you new people. This was never good legislation. I disagree with my colleague from the tenth. It was horrible legislation because it was written for one person. It was written in response to, we had had some split elections for the mayor in which people said, "Well, you pulled people, votes away from people." I understand that. But what we never ever did was sit down and listen to the people like me, who actually know how to write legislation, who said, "What about if you only have two people? If you only have two people, why do you have to have another election? That is a waste of money." The people who pushed this should be giving my money back, should be getting the Alderman from the fifth, and several other people who only had two people running against them for past elections, but we had to get out there and run two elections, which was silly. It was a waste of money. They never ever understood until this election for the president of the Board, and then we had two candidates. And then people said, "Well, why are we having these two elections?" Because they wrote bad elect, bad legislation. And so what I don't like is when people write bad legislation and they don't own up to it. Because if I do something wrong, I own up to it and say, "Hey, that was wrong, it needs to be fixed." The people who pushed this need to be saying, "We didn't know what we were doing, and we pushed something, and it cost the city a lot of money." And Alderwoman Boyd knows that I did, Alderman from the Oldenburg, Orion, and the Alderman from the fifth, they all know, I wrote things saying, "Why are we doing this? This is wrong." Not only was it wrong, but we then turned around because we could have just done an ordinance and changed it. And I did propose one a few years ago, which all the people now who say we need to change it said, "Oh, no, you can't do that." They then turned around and wrapped it up in the charter. So instead of doing an ordinance to change this, because people need to know the history of, because people act like, "Oh, I don't know anything about it." Oh, yeah, there were names attached to. And so then they put it in a charter proposal, Proposition R, I think it was, and wrapped it up in the charter. It was dumb. It was not smart. It is not good legislation. We did not try to look out for everybody. We were looking out for one person, that was Tashar Jones, who was running for mayor. Now, I happen to have supported her. It still was bad legislation. It was bad legislation because when you write legislation for one person, that's bad legislation. So as we change this now, and I'm going to vote for it, but I don't want people to think that it was just something that happened. It was something that they would not listen, which is often what happens when people go out and they legislate without the Board. So they push these propositions, and then they don't want to hear anything. We talked about it in committee. Nobody wanted to hear anything. At some point, you're going to have to start hearing, I know this Board thinks that seniority education experience, they've already said, "That doesn't make any sense, it make any difference. We need the new people. We can bring new things." But unfortunately, in legislation, you have to know how things connect. You have to know that the right hand is connected to the left hand. And when you don't know that, and you get out there, you push this stuff, and you don't listen to people who do this, then you make mistakes like this, and you cost the city a lot of money. And that's what they did. This legislation cost the city thousands of dollars. Every time we have an unnecessary election, it costs the city thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And nobody says, "Well, I want to be responsible for that." They go, "Oops, let's just change that." No, it's not oops. We all are owed our money back. I never, ever, ever, ever had a lot of people running against me until this last time, and then they still got slaughtered. And so here's the thing. The other thing that we did, and I hope we go back and change this too, is that when they were pushing this legislation, they said, "Well, we want to make sure that people get a majority of the vote. We want to have a majority." Brandon Bosley got 74% the Third Ward in his last election, and the other person got 20, and it was only two people. Guess what? They had to have another election because poor legislation. 74% running against the same person? Why are you having another election? That's silly. That's not good legislation. That is an agenda that we have in which people do not want to sit down and understand and hear that, hey, I don't care if you're on the different side, I don't care if you're on the same side, write good legislation. I don't stand here to oppose this legislation because I opposed it when they were doing it in the first place. I stand here to say, the people who did it ought to take responsibility for it and not, and have somebody saying, "Oh, well, see, we just have to change this because this is for the good of everybody." No. It was never for the good of everybody. It was for the good of a few, and it cost a lot of people who were in office running elections a lot of money. And not anybody apologizes when they do anything wrong, not anybody stands up and takes responsible, they just, responsibility, they just try to pass it by. The press doesn't say, "Hey, these are the people that voted for this." Okay, I tell them all the time, if I did something, I'll say it. You don't have to come and run after me because I'll say it. But those people who put their names on and pushed this, and some of them are sitting right here, need to say, "We didn't know what we were talking about." And maybe next time, what I really want is you listen when people who've been around for a long time tell you about, "Well, this is why something's wrong." I didn't just say this was wrong. I actually went through and said, "It's going to cost money." And what about if it's two, only two people? I'm a lawyer. Alderman Orion is a lawyer. What about these things? What is the point of having people who actually can point out flaws in legislation if you just push everything through anyway and you don't care? So I am supportive of this legislation, and I'm laughing because I did write an ordinance that they all said, "Oh, no, we can't do this." And now you're doing the same thing I did, and should have been done over a year, two years ago. You got to start listening. If you want this to be a Board of Aldermen, we got to have people who listen to stuff. And if you don't, we're just going to make a lot of mistakes that cost a lot of people a lot of money, and then we're going to try to hide it. As long as I'm on this Board of Aldermen, that's not going to happen. In fact, I'm going to name names because you should not be able to get away with wasting that kind of money and then not say, "I was behind this." So it was not because it was for good legislation, it was to get Tashar Jones elected mayor, who I supported, but did not support this legislation because it is poor, it was poor legislation, and there are other things in it that they wrapped up in the charter that is also poor legislation.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. I would like to present amendment number one to Board Bill 87.
Would you like to make a motion?
I mean, I'd like to make a motion to-
Adopt.
Adopt amendment number one to Board Bill 87.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the twelfth, that we adopt amendment number one to Board Bill 87. Alderman, you-
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and I appreciate my colleagues for having a discussion on this because I think any times when we're talking about elections, it's important that the voters actually know what is potentially happening. And I also appreciate the Alderwoman from the tenth Ward for being willing to take it off consent and to have a conversation about this. I, as a supporter of Prop D and supported Prop D, I do agree with the Alderwoman from the twelfth that the idea behind Prop D maybe didn't have the best execution. In the last few years, we've changed our elections several times. I would argue that we can't do this because while I may not change the method of the way that people vote, we're changing- that people vote, we're changing the methodology of the way that people vote. Voters are, I know in my ward, voters are still confused about Prop D as somebody who supported it. And I understand it's a lot of education. It isn't ranked choice voting. It is approval voting. I want to be clear. It's not ranking people. It is selecting, if it's four people on the ballot, you could select three of them. You could select all four of them. And to some extent, I understand that having primaries, when it's only two people, is a potential waste of money to the board of all, I mean, to the board of elections. My issue with why I'm bringing this amendment, what this amendment does is it brings, it will put this on the ballot in November of 2024 so that voters can actually be made very well aware of what's happening. If we would have just passed this down at the board of aldermen and in its first state, it was on the consent form, voters would not have been even aware that in the up and coming 2025 municipal election that, say, they go out and vote in the 11th ward and it's two people on the ballot, that they wouldn't be selecting the alderperson. However, say that there's three people on the ballot for mayor, there will still be ballots within that ward where voters would be confused, why is there only the mayor on the ballot, but not the alderperson? Or two years from that? Because each, every election where alderpeople are up will either be up with the mayor or will be up with the president. So the people will still be confused if they're not aware of what potentially is on their ballot. And now we got vote anywhere. So you try to go vote somewhere and you think you're going to vote for your alderpeople and there's two people on there and they wouldn't even be able to vote for them. To some people, I understand they do, it is kind of a pointless primary. But in a lot of wars where people are already still confused, I feel like if we don't put this in front of voters, which I believe the voters will vote for, but if we don't put this in front of voters where they actually know what's going on, we only going to confuse them. Because it's saying if there's two alderpeople on the ballot, yes, their names won't be on, but if there's three people for mayor, then their names will be on the ballot. So there still will be ballots where voters will be going to vote, maybe thinking they're voting for their alderperson and they won't. And I'll be curious how the board of election will then be sending out individual ballots to each ward saying, you don't have to vote for your alderperson, but you will have to vote for the mayor. Or you don't have to vote for the president because it's only two people, but there's three people for aldermen, so you do have to vote for your alderperson. I think by putting this in front of the people for them to actually vote on it, gives them their voice to be heard to say, yes, I want to do this, but it is a level of education to it also. And with that, I close for discussion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm listening to everybody and I'm hearing what was said and Alderwoman Tyus, we did push against this Prop R and Prop D. It was over almost two years ago that we kept saying this was not a good idea. But now what I'm hearing is now we're, we are challenged to get people to go to the polls. And now you're confusing them even more. And so guess what? Now we're going to be more challenged and it's turning them off. And so now they won't vote. So my question to my colleagues are how are we going to educate the community? Because if we're not taking them and sitting them down and saying, this is what's happening, this is how it's impacting your community, it's not going to change anything. So you can register 50 million people to vote, but if they're not understanding what the rules are and what's going to happen to them and how it's impacting them, it's not going to change anything. So I just think it's just more confusion being thrown into the fire. And again, our residents are left there helpless because we talk a good game, but how many of us up here are actually educating our community and saying, this is the change that's happening and this is how it's going to impact you? So I tell people all the time, you can do bills forever, but if you don't get that information to the community that you servicing, they don't have a knowledge of, an idea of what's going on. And I just think that's appalling because these are the people we're supposed to be serving. So we can come up with all these ideas, but I feel like the people up in the White House coming up with stuff and they're not on the ground working with the people that's actually going to be impacted. So, I mean, I don't, I understand what the alderman from the 14th is doing. And I think, I just told my colleagues, it's like you tell your child, don't touch that stove because it's hot. We kept saying, it's fire there. Don't touch that because you're going to get burnt. Now we're being burnt. Now everybody like, oh, we shouldn't have did it this way. Well, now we just spent all this money. And so I just think as a city, we are uselessly throwing money down the sewer. We keep throwing money out here and we have people that actually need help. So I think we need to look at what we're doing as far as legislation and the people that we serve. And I serve a community that people feel like they don't have enough sense to know what's going on. But let me explain this to you. My people are not dumb and they know when you trying to run things by them. So don't do that to my community, okay? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Going to do Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you. I rise against this amendment. I don't think it's necessary to send this to voters to clean up a previous mistake that was made. I think most people are already on board with skipping a primary election if there are only two candidates. And further delaying that is really just doing a disservice to them. We all know that this is something that needs to be done. I think we're all in agreement on that. But I do appreciate the, Alderwoman from the 13th's comments about educating our community. I think it's really important to get out there and talk to people at their neighborhood association meetings, even into their doors, going to the block parties, you know, that's, that's our job. Should we delay doing the right thing because some of us don't do that? I don't think so. I think we need to really go out there and make sure that we're educating people on this between now and the next election that this will affect. But sending it to voters is really just an unnecessary step when we're really just cleaning up after ourselves. And I do appreciate the frustration that we didn't get this right the first time. That was a sloppy piece of legislation that really neglected this. But we don't need to compound on our mistakes now and further push something to a ballot, further confusing people about what they're doing when this really should have been the way the legislation should have been in the first place. So let's do our job. Let's get it done and let's pass this out today without the amendment so that we can have it fixed for the next election.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, I rise in support of amendment number one. The alderman from the 14th is directly on point. A reason why is because he's one of those people that was out there, so he knows what was going on. It was not something we created just as an ordinance. We then submitted it to the voters. They voted on it. And then we turned around and compounded the mistake by rolling it into Proposition R. And the alderman from the 14th is really saving us. So I wasn't going to say anything. I was laughing going, ha, ha, they are, they are missing the point. They made this part of Proposition R. So you are exactly correct. This is how you do good legislation and this is how you clean up when you make a mistake. You don't say, oh, this is just a little mistake. It wasn't. We submitted this to the voters. And then when, when that got passed, we still could have changed it as by an ordinance. But then we turned around and wrapped it up in Proposition R that says, if you want to make a change like this, you have to resubmit it to voters. So we are, cannot do it without doing it just the way the alderman from the 14th has proposed. And it doesn't hurt anything, even if we could, because then we're submitted to the voters to say, hey, this was a mistake and we need to clean it up. And this is the proper way to do it and it doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything, but it in fact helps something because it's going to make this legislation the way it should have been in the first place, which was to commit it back to the voters. And I rise in support.
Any further discussion? I'm going to go to the alderwoman from the 1st.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I had the same question about whether or not this amendment would be required under Proposition R based on Proposition R having a section that says if the voting method is changed or that if the board of aldermen tries to change the voting method, the approval voting, it would have to go back to the voters. However, this does not, the bill that is being proposed by the alderwoman from the 10th does not change the voting method of a primary. It just removes an unnecessary election, not anything to do with the method of the primary that we voted on. So I do not believe that Proposition R applies in this board bill. And I think that my colleagues should not support this amendment and should support the board bill. And I'd like to be added as a cosponsor. Please, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to clarify something. As I was having a conversation with the board of election Democratic Commissioner, we talked about Prop R. And I would, I would say that I believe if we do pass this, we're going to find ourselves potentially in a legal issue. Some can say it doesn't change the method of it, but you are eliminating a process in some wards and not other wards. And I just want to be very clear and respectfully disagree with the alderman of the 9th to saying we're confusing voters more. Anytime we put something on the ballot and be able to go out and educate voters, it is helpful. And in some wards, I see my resident from the 14th, Mr. Sheriff Bet shaking his head. In some wards, when we talk about neighbor associations, we talk about groups that you can go out, a lot of wards in North St. Louis don't have that same foundation or disenfranchised to be able to get the word out as much. So we're going to these senior buildings. We're going into areas that are currently turned off from elections. And by not giving them a voice and not educating them by putting it on the ballot and us just passing it, I mean, we didn't, we didn't do that with Prop D. It was signatures that was put on the ballot, love it or not. People gathered signatures. They went out, they educated people and it was on the ballot. And a lot of us actually voted for it and some of us didn't. But I don't see how we could be against allowing the people of the city of St. Louis to have an input on it. And if anything, being able to engage them part of this new process. I just got a text message from one of my residents saying, thank you for bringing this up because I wasn't aware that this would even be happening. They wouldn't have been aware that, in some wards, again, a candidate wouldn't be on the ballot. We talk about confusing voters by not putting this on the ballot so they know exactly what will be up in that next election. This will be in the general election, 2024, where we know a lot of people will come out and turn out or be made very aware. There'll be neighborhood guides going, there'll be voter guides going. If it's not on the ballot when the election come up in 2025, voters, especially in disenfranchised wards, would not be aware that, wait, I thought my alder lady name was on the ballot, but it's not because the board of aldermen is doing a cleanup, which I think the bill is in, is doing that. I think it's good. But without taking it to the voter, the people, so they know exactly what we're doing down here, I think only confuses voters more, especially in communities where we're struggling to get high turnout. We're struggling to engage wards as much as possible. We're struggling to make sure that people are actually engaged in the process and not just pass something at the board and then they won't be aware that actually, nope, you won't have a primary. Thankfully, we got the press here, maybe they cover it. But before this, it wouldn't have been covered. We, the word wouldn't have got out. I'm sure as we went into the 2024 election, we wouldn't be thinking about going out, educating voters, saying, oh, by the way, next year, there's going to be another change to the way that voting is. We'll be more worried about getting out the vote for the president. So I think this is a small thing that is important to be able to let voters in the city of St. Louis be aware of again, how the elections will be changing. Because in some wards, again, you may have your alderperson on the ballot. In some wards, you may not. In some wards, you may have the president on the ballot or the mayor on the ballot, but not your alderperson. So it's a way for us, I believe, by putting it to the voter, the people, which I don't understand how we're against putting some to the voter, people and just letting them know what's going on. A big issue. I think this is a amendment that kind of undo a lot of confusion because they will be aware of what they're voting on when they go out and they vote for president, when they go out and they vote for their state reps, when they go out and they vote for the senators in 2024. It'll be a part at the end of the ballot that talks about a proposition, which most of us read propositions and we go out to our ward, neighborhood associations or meetings and the committee man and committee woman, as Ms. Keys and I was, we go out and we engage people as committee people on the different proposition. So I think by giving the people a, a choice, which I believe they will vote for this, but more importantly, educating people on the change is what we should be doing, not just down here at the board saying, yeah, we'll do it. And it's our job to go out and educate people. Yes, it's our job. I'm sure we will. But if it's not on the ballot, I'm sure we're juggling, walking and doing a lot of other things and other board bills will be in front of us. I think this is a, a simple amendment that can be helpful in the change that we're trying to do by ensuring that residents actually are aware of what's going in the next election that will be coming up in the municipal race, which we already know we have low turnout, which we already know that is super hard to engage people. So why we not try to inform them and educate them on what will be changed again and let them have a voice in that process?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion on the amendment? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the alderman from the 14th would yield?
Would the alderman from the 14th yield to questioning from the alderwoman from the 12th?
Absolutely.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderman, so we did back in November, what was it, 2020? We actually took this to the voters to change so how we would elect aldermen. Is that not correct? And the president of the board and anybody in the city? We couldn't do the county offices, but we did do
Correct. Any city offices, that's not the county offices at the state level. So like you say, alder, man and woman, president and the mayor.
Okay. And so that was submitted to the voters?
Submitted to voters. People gathered signatures. They put it on the ballot. They educated people in the process of what will be changed and the voters had to vote on it to say, yes, they want this or no, they didn't want it.
And so I also, and so that's always interesting to me that we want to submit things to the voters because I think, and I'm, I'm just pulling from the top of my head, I think that when you want to change something that's been submitted to the voters by ordinance, there are some requirements about how many people on this board have to vote for. Okay. But going on to the second question I had, you said you went over to the, you talked to the board of election, one of the directors. Was it about this specific legislation or was it about how we get elected in general?
So it was actually, I talked to, before we went to recess, I had reached out to Democratic Commissioner Ben Bergmeyer because I had questions. I was curious with the vote anywhere centers, how would that work? I was curious, does it really save money? We say it's going to save money, but if you have three people for mayor, you're still printing a ballot. So we're not saving money. And was curious of where it kind of came from. And again, without, what was, what is, what's going to be their engagement in educating people on the process? And while I love the, the board of elections, if they're already saying they don't have money, and we've, we ran into this as committee people, they came to us last minute when they talked about the vote anywhere centers, right? They don't have the funds, so how are you going to go out? They don't have door knockers. They don't have people that are in the community like we are. So how are they going to educate the people when that election come up? Because their hands going to be all on deck for 2024. And then we're going to have, what, four months later, the March election? When are they going to be able to take the time to educate people and say, oh, in this race, again, you won't have to vote for your alderperson, but you vote for your mayor? It is, it is, or your, your president. Or you vote for the president, but you don't vote for your alderperson.
Okay, I want to say to you, so we've always had that. So before you, we changed it back in 2020 when we just ran and you had a general and a primary. So you could have two people running for the mayor and nobody running against an alderman. And then what you did, you didn't have to go out there and spend your money over, if it was two people for the primary. Then when you beat them, then you took that time between March and April to actually be out in your board and servicing your community. So what this piece of legislation did in November is made the people who had won by big amounts still have to go back out and run another election, which took time really away from your community, okay? Because now you got to run another election, you just beat somebody, you're running against the same person. There's only been two occasions in which that changed, and that was one in which Michelle Sherrod beat Tina by, former Alderman of the 17th by five, almost 500 votes, and then lost by 14, which I don't, I just find that appalling and told them. And when Alderman of the former Alderman of the 5th lost by 65% to the former Alderwoman of the 5th and then came back and beat her. But other than that, that doesn't happen, and nor should it happen because they, both of the people won by significant numbers. And as I recall, when this was put out as something for legislation, it was not to have people squeak by or to have less than 50%. But in both of these cases, Alderwoman Hubbard won by 60-something percent and Michelle Sherrod won by 60-something percent. So that was, to me, also a mistake to then keep having elections.
And I'm happy you brought that up because if anything, this doesn't even change, like you say, the Prop D. You still, if two people on the ballot in the primary, they still going to go out and knock doors, they still, because they got to get to the general, right? They may be moving on forward, but maybe a threshold, right? It would have been different if a bill was in front of us saying, "If you get a threshold, then you don't have to be in the general." By eliminating the primary, we still not changing like the method of Prop D. It would still be two candidates on the ballot. Most likely, they still going to be knocking doors in January, February, March, even though they are the only ones to still get people aware that they're on the ballot leading up to the April race. So this doesn't change the, the Prop D as what we're trying to do. I think if anything, we probably should have been talking about, you know, putting thresholds with still having Prop D and maybe if somebody will bring that amendment forward, you know?
So I would like to say, Alderman, so you weren't here. It was told to the people who was pushing it, they just didn't want to hear. There's a lot of rushing down here, don't want to hear, oh, that's all right, don't want to hear who's telling it, even though the person who's telling you is really pretty careful about writing legislation and is going to go over it, just doesn't want to hear it, okay? So we do need to change all of that. It was not good legislation. As I said before, it's not good legislation when you change it for one person and you think you're fixing something, you're really breaking a lot of other things most times. So this gets to what you said, and I just want to say again, for those people that's like, oh, why should we wait later? I don't know that we're having automatic election in the next few days or, so this is going to be put on the, when it's the ballot, when it's the language that you said it would be put on?
The 2024 general race. So it would go into effect for the next, if we do this, it would be in timeline, so in 2025, it would align up.
Automatic election.
Before the automatic, before the mayor race.
Election.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, this does not affect or stop anything.
No, it does not. It brings attention to it, and like I say, it educates people on the next change that would be happening in that election. If not, they'll, you know, they'll go from the general election to the mayor or the municipal race, not even knowing that, oh, that was a change, you know?
And since we, now, what was very troubling to me is we changed it in November of 20th, and then we had to run for, we had to file for election like the next few days and get on there, on board with that. This would be, again, just what you said, a way to highlight, hey, we know we made a mistake, we're trying to fix some of it, we really should come back and before November 24 and fix the other part of it, because that needs to be resolved too. So I want to commit to you that if you want to work on that, I do, because, and I will show you all the emails I sent to the full board saying, "This is a mistake, this is a mistake, this is a mistake." And what you're doing is the best way to do what you're talking about, whether they, and I disagree with, it's not a change of a method. It is a change of a method.
It is.
In a way, so, and one of the things, before you came on board, I talked with Board of Elections all the time. In fact, the former Alderman from the 28th, what the Board of Elections had said he had to run one way, and I had hearings, and ta-da, it was what I said, okay? And they had to change what they were doing, and Mike Doss got to run as a Democrat because I had hearings, because I dig in the weeds. So it is a method, this is a good amendment, I'm supportive. I would ask everybody, there's no, nothing, there's no downside to it. Even if you don't think it's a method, there's no downside to getting it done and that way making sure that the very people that you wanted in the process when you were changing it, you want to make sure that they are made aware that they're going to be in the process as you are correcting it.
Thank you, Alderman.
Any further discussion, any further discussion on the amendment? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to speak on a few things that my colleagues said, and again, I just love that these meetings are recorded and we can go back and watch people's past comments and listen to. We can go back and watch people's past comments and listen even to their comments today and how some of them are contradictory, but the bottom line is if you're talking about a piece and being able to educate someone, the reality is that we all have a responsibility down here as elected officials every day to educate our constituencies, not just around an election cycle. And when you're leading up to a campaign, and we all just did this this year, we hear at the doors from our constituencies about problems, not just at picking up trash and dogs barking and fast cars, but we also hear about common sense things, right? And so this is one of the common sense things that was brought up, not just in this election, not just by me, by my colleagues many times here, you can run back, by colleagues in the past. I'm so glad that Alderwoman Tyus brought up about knowing the history because I'm big on that. I research, I go back and watch the committee hearings, I love that part about it. Also, the biggest reality is when we were in committee talking about this legislation, again, to her point, to everyone's point, this is not the first time we talked about this. But when we were there with not myself, not my colleagues there, these were the Board of Elections from the city of St. Louis, constituencies, and Legal Women Voters, who, if you want to talk about educating about voting and election cycles, you have to give credit where it's due to organizations like Legal Women Voters for the work they do. A lot of times, people use put it on the ballot, and it's been said up here in so many words, you just want to put something on the ballot, you talking about confusing people? You want to have all these signatures, you talking about confusing people? How many of us have constituencies that they didn't know what they were signing? And then when they got to the ballot and they woke up and they heard this had passed, we didn't know that's what that meant. Or when they looked and read the little blurb even on the ballot, we didn't know that's what they meant. First and foremost, that's not up to the Board of Elections, that's up to the candidate or the, or the people that are behind whatever that ballot initiative. That's who it is, that's whose responsibility it is to educate people. And if we pass, when we pass Board Bill 87, when we pass Board Bill 87, we will have a year and a half, if not longer. Start today if you want to, to educate your constituency about being at the ballot, voting every vote, how votes count, how they are elections, how every election cycle counts. This is our responsibility, starting here. Could have started in committees, could have started when we doing this years ago, even before this board came, before this board was elected. We talked about this in the last session. But if you want to just fall back on giving it to the voter, the people again, people can say they don't know how that's been manipulated and how it's been used to manipulate our communities, but it has. We were elected to lead up here, and some of these decisions do not need a vote of the people. Best practices, common sense, saving the city of St. Louis money, this is not confusing to people. How many of us, I'm saying, moving forward without this first election when it's only two votes? Some of the stuff that's been said up here is confusing to people. But having a general election, the way, the same way we doing other elections here in the city of St. Louis, the, the Board of Education only votes in once, the, the trustees, there are other elections that, this is not an affair, like, we don't, we're not making this up to just go to a general election. So we, we up here have to lead and make best decisions for our constituency, for our constituency base. People can say what they want to say up here, but we can run takes back about even during the election cycle when they might have heard themselves. I'm not voting in that first election, it don't mean nothing. So now, because they're not voting, because you have a base that's not voting, guess what still has to, the Board of Elections still has to do their job. The city of St. Louis still has to pay for that election. So it's not confusing. People, I don't, I don't know why people try to make it seem like people can't comprehend something that's so common sense. And if you're outrunning your campaign as a candidate, I wouldn't, if I was in an election like that, I wouldn't say, "Don't vote for whosever on the primary election just because my name's valid." That's ridiculous. And I've been a committee person before too. And I always encourage people to vote in every election. So what my nerves would change? Because there's only two qualified candidates in the primary, we are advancing to the general, but please, let's still engage and vote for your comptroller candidates or your mayoral candidates. That was, that's not hard. And I don't think it's fair to people to act like they wouldn't be able to understand that. Again, this, if you want to put this on the ballot next year, how are we contradicting saving money by causing, putting another election, causing another election cycle, putting something else on the ballot? Who's going to raise the money for the campaign? It costs money to run campaigns too. Who's going to run the campaign? Because years earlier, we heard that people weren't doing their job to do campaign education. Now you're putting it on somebody else to do that again. You're putting on another election cycle to do that again. It just, to me, I'm not sure where it's coming from because a lot of, a lot of, again, a lot of the comments that have been said are contradictory. We need to do what's best to have voter engagement versus voter suppression. We know our areas, we know our bases, we know who votes and, and when they don't vote, we hear, when they don't feel like voting, we hear, "Don't call my house no more," then I just, we, we hear all of that as candidates. So we know firsthand what this is going to mean. And that's why I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this amendment and do what we were elected to do, to lead and make decisions on behalf of the greater good, on the greater good. And then if anybody has a problem with educating in their base and educating in their constituency base, call me. I have no problem with coming over and talking to people about this, showing them the committee hearings, showing the numbers, showing them why this makes sense for us to vote for Board Bill, I'm sorry, to not support this amendment and vote for Board Bill 87 as is, that we've worked on with the Board of Elections for the city of St. Louis and Legal Counsel, advocacy groups such as Legal Women Voters and our constituency and my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 12th, that we approve Amendment 1 to Board Bill Number 87. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
No.
Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderman Con. I'm sorry, I didn't hear Alderwoman Spencer. Thank you. Eight I votes, I'm sorry, four I votes, eight no votes, and one voted present.
By your vote, you failed to sustain the motion. Alderman from the 14th, approve Amendment Number 1 to Board Bill 7. We are now back to Board Bill 87. Any further discussion on Board Bill 87? Alderman from the 9th.
I'd like to be added as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I know people probably tell me, so I ask again for your favorable consideration on Board Bill 87.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 5th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 87. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Twelve I votes and three no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th on the perfection of Board Bill 87.
Board Bill 113 sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportement, authorized and directing the director of airports and the comptroller of the city of St. Louis, owner and operator of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the banking concession agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the U.S. Bank National Association, which is attached heretofore as attachment 1 and made a part hereof containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 113.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt Board Bill 113.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 113. Alderman from the 3rd, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a relatively simple lease agreement out at the airport for ATM services. The respondent, U.S. National Bank, or most commonly known as U.S. Bank, was the recipient of the contract based off of the RFP process, and this would authorize them to essentially provide ATM services out at the airport.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 113. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldrich. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Tyus. Thirteen I votes and one abstain.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 3rd on the perfection of Board Bill 113.
Board Bill 123 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 70794, which adopted the 2018 International Building Code with amendments by the addition of a new subsection, subsection 119.3.3, to authorize the building commissioner to take steps to secure vacant buildings or structures of 500 or more square feet, which impose significant extensive concerns to the health, safety, and well-being of the public to prevent the entry and occupancy of building or structure, including the use of steel barriers or plates and engaging the services of a security services provider and the cost of any such measure being paid for by the owner of the building or structure and containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 123. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we perfect Board Bill 123. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 123. You may proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Bill 123 is an ordinance that authorizes the city of St. Louis to take additional steps when it comes to very large buildings, buildings in particular that are over 500,000 square feet, of, of which there are very few in the city of St. Louis, but they are very remarkably large buildings. Downtown in particular is where we have these. This is really to address safety concerns for extremely large buildings. We've seen the railway exchange recently been breached, caught on fire. This is an incredibly important building for the city of St. Louis. It's extremely difficult to secure based on its size. The traditional wood barriers have been breached countless times, and so what this does is it authorizes the city to take additional measures in this, to put up steel barriers, to add additional layers of security, and to hire security companies when the owners of buildings are failing to protect the assets, the historical assets that are our city and cause enormous threat to the general well-being and the public safety of our community. It furthermore directs the city to invoice the owners of the buildings for the cost of the additional security measures. So recouping those costs is an incredibly important aspect here because these actions are extremely expensive as we're, as we're finding out through, through this process. are extremely expensive as we're finding out through this process. With that, I'll take questions from my esteemed colleagues.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Can I be added as a cosponsor to this bill?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to thank Alderwoman Spencer for doing her, you know, her due diligence and the work on this bill. I can't wait to see how this goes because I think it could be really useful for other places throughout our city, and I too would like to be added as cosponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 9th.
I just want to say thank you, Alderwoman 8th, for bringing this bill forward. The bigger buildings in our city have an outsized impact on their surrounding communities, and it's essential that we both protect our historical assets and also the neighborhoods surrounding them. So with that, I would also like to be added as a cosponsor. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 4th.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we embank Board Bill 123. Is there any objection? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a gracious reminder to look at this side of the table every once in a while when you're...
My apologies.
Folks. I know it's a little bit awkward with the dais right in the middle of us all, but I do also want to commend the Alderwoman from the 8th on her efforts with this. I do have one question for the Alderwoman, if she would yield for questioning.
Would the Alderwoman from the 8th yield to questioning from the Alderman from the 3rd?
Absolutely.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Could you, I read an article, I think, in the Business Journal recently that SLDC was providing $100,000 for board up of the Railway Exchange building. Can you just help me understand, is that related to this board bill? And if so, is that where the money is going to come from continuously, you know, related to this board bill? I'm just kind of wondering the, you know, because these are obviously pretty expensive board ups. So where do you anticipate the money coming from on a regular basis for these?
Thank you, Alderman. That's a good question. Yes, SLDC voted Wednesday of this week, I missed the meetings, but when they exactly occur, but to provide that level of funding specifically for the Railway Exchange. Moving forward, what this bill does is authorizes the city to make those expenditures and tack them on as liens to the property owners and allows the city to recoup the cost of that. How that will play out specifically with this, with that particular, with this particular set of board ups, I can't answer exactly because there's some legal aspects of that. But moving forward, what this bill does is put in place the very clear expectation that the city can and will use additional measures, seal structures, and authorize the expenditures of, you know, hiring a security company and then invoice the owner. So it just makes it extremely clear what we can do moving forward. And you're right, I mean, it's so expensive. I'm grateful for SLDC and Greater St. Louis to come to the table and help fund this first round.
And just to follow up to that question, would they, that $100,000 that was authorized, would that be able to be added as a lien based off of this ordinance being passed? Or since they've already voted to secure the building and pay the funds, is that kind of a lost amount of money at this point?
So that is what I was referring to earlier, that I'm not able to typically address right now, just not fully vetting the legal aspect of that. So Alderman, respectfully, what I'll do is get some clarity on that before we finally pass it next week.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. I'm just curious. And then, but totally understand the legalities with respect to that. And then, of course, many of us have vacant school buildings in our neighborhoods. Is this something that would be applicable to SLPs? I know the answer already, but I just want to make sure that we're, like, putting that out into the public domain as well.
So that's an excellent question because we all have large buildings in our wards that are vacant, just about. What this starts with is 500,000 square feet. So I think, you know, those buildings that are most difficult to secure and have the largest impact just based on their sheer size. So moving forward, Alderman, I think it's a good idea to take this as a pilot and take a look at it and see if we can apply it more broadly to smaller scale buildings. You know, the steel that we're putting in, you know, I want to make sure too that it's not damaging the building and doesn't have long-term effect on, you know, the facades of some of these buildings. I mean, the Railway Exchange is got an absolutely stunning application of terracotta on the outside. I mean, I have goosebumps, just, that's absolutely beautiful. And you have to make sure that those, that the structures aren't damaged because what we're protecting is our historical assets and are an incredibly important part of our city.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
Madam Chair, if I could just expound on that or take a moment to recognize the Building Division and our board up crew over there, who has been, you know, although very short-staffed in our Building Division right now, extremely responsive, and, you know, those guys work so hard boarding these things up, and it's so demoralizing sometimes to re-board up the same building day after day. But we've, you know, the Building Division has been a great partner in this, and I really have to commend them for those efforts. And Deanna Murphy of our Neighborhood Stabilization Team has been really, really, really active on this, as so is Isaiah from my office. So there's been several folks that have been really, really, in particular with this building just based on its sheer size, really responsive, and I'm really grateful for those efforts.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 123. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 100 as amended, 102 committee sub, 118, 121, 98, 99, 33 floor sub as amended, and Board Bill 34.
Third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Alderwoman from the 13th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt...
Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, Madam President, could you move Board Bill 98 to the informal calendar, please?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Right, third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill 100 as amended, 102 committee sub, 118, 121, 99, 33 floor sub as amended, and Board Bill 34.
33 floor subs should be on the, and 34 should both be on the third reading and final passage of board bills, not the consent calendar.
I stand corrected. Let me read them again. 100 as amended, 102 committee sub, 118, 121, and Board Bill 99.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you now. I move to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we third read and final pass the board bills on the consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. Fifteen I votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 33 floor sub as amended sponsored by Alderman Orion, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderman Browning, an ordinance requiring a permit to operate a short-term rental containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 4th, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 33 floor substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 33 floor sub as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we finally pass Board Bill Number 33 floor substitute as amended. Alderman, you may...
I don't want to take up a whole bunch more time with this. I think we've spoken about this pretty in-depth over the last many years. We really got in-depth with this last week. I anticipate that we'll hear some of those same points again. So with that, I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
I rise in opposition to Board Bill 33. We did go over a lot of the things last week. This week, I received correspondence from a person who is, who operates and is a lawyer for many of the condominiums association, who lives in the Skinker de Bolifer neighborhood. And he sent, he said, a letter to each of us because there was a statement made about if we don't pass this as is, that there was going to be lawsuits as it has in the past. And they took issue with that and said that there were not any lawsuits really, that they, the ones that were, were actually ones that were won by the cities. They were also opposed to it, and I think the letter came from lawyer, what's his name, Elston Kirchner or something there about. And during that time, I also heard from people in my ward, because I made a statement about we didn't really have that many short-term rentals, and we don't, but I did hear from one of the people who has one, and he's an owner, he lives next door to his short-term rental, and he was specifically opposed to it and wanted to know why we weren't allowed to opt out, since this was supposed to address the problem that downtown was having. Why would we not be allowed to opt out or at the very least not make a requirement that if you're going to put something in a neighborhood, A or B, even C, that we would not, well, maybe not C, but A or B, that we would not require the owner to live near 500 feet or as he does next door. He is very hands-on with his short-term rental. We've never had any problems. I think the Alderman from the 4th made the statement last week that everybody probably had these problems, and I told him that we didn't, and I don't want there to be a problem. This is a solution for maybe downtown, but not a solution for North St. I find it interesting that you went to solve a solution for one part of town, and the solution includes, oh, well, let's make it all of the city and even the places where the people have been representative, people have been elected to represent the areas for a long time, do not want it, and neither do the people who you're pushing it on. If this becomes a problem, there's no sunset clause that says we want to give it a time and if it doesn't work, let's let it end, which could have been a sunset clause. I also heard last week that the mayor wanted it to be like that. The mayor doesn't live in North St. Louis. Many people might call it North St. Louis. She lives four blocks, five blocks from Del Mar and for a long time now. Between Del Mar and Page has had millions and millions, if not a billion dollars, put into that neighborhood, going from Skinker de Bolifer, which is where Washington has the North Campus, all the way up to Kings Highway and over down to Vandeventure. So that is not North St. Louis. The real North St. Louis starts north of Page, and the mayor nor none of her staff live there, and I don't know why she would be pushing something there when the people specifically don't want it. If that's what you need, and that's what I thought you were addressing, was what you needed and what downtown needed, and I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem when you decide that one size fits all. There is nothing in almost this earth that one size fits all. You have to have different solutions for different parts of the city. It's why we have a zoning code. I find this as a way to go around the zoning code, and I say this often, so I'll say it. I'm a landlord. I own property, mostly in North St. Louis because that's where I wanted to rehab property, and that's what I've done successfully. But I don't do short-term rental for a reason. The places where I've had to deal with it for the last 30 years in my community are a problem. We have hotels where people have housing and they cause problems, and so that is not anything we need in North St. Louis. We have been left out of so much of the decision-making ability for our own communities. People think that that's all right, whatever is put in North St. We have things put into our community, too many gas stations that are having shootings, all kind of things, too much junk food, too many little corner stores that may be good for the people who are running them, but are not good for the neighborhoods. When you're having shootings, killings, and things, it's not in the neighborhood, it's at these places. But the people downtown, specifically the Board of Adjustment, has made us have things like that, that we don't want. Same thing with liquor. Liquor everywhere. We don't need that kind of liquor in our community, and it's always interesting because I've had conversations with people who are pushing these things, and I heard somebody say, asked the people just last week, where do you live? That's exactly what I ask people. When they come and ask me about putting liquor, which I don't drink, I say, where do you live? Then put it right by your house. Then they don't want to do that. I did have a person do that one time, and I'm speaking, it was a Domino's Pizza, and he bought it, and that's how I got into politics, about zoning issues and what was good for our community. And we kept saying this Domino's should not go at the corner of Mathieu and keep it that way. The Board of Adjustment pushed it into our home anyway. It was a big problem. And finally, the guy who bought it said, what do you want? You're giving me such a hard time. I said, move your family there. The minute he moved his family there, and I want to tell you, it was within a week, he said, everything you said is true. It didn't bother him because he lived someplace else. He lived in West County. But when he put his family there, then it was a different thing. Most of the people who are pushing this do not live in North St. Louis. They don't know the problems we deal with, and so for, to make a solution good for you but not good for me, not a good thing for the city. And I don't ever attempt to do that. And since I've been down here, when things like this went on, they would allow people to opt out of it, which is what I suggested. Take the 12th ward out. Take the 12th ward out. You can do whatever you want to with your wards, but the 12th ward does not need this. I would suspect that the 13th ward is probably doesn't need it either, because I've had a conversation with it. So we represent most of North St. Louis. Who are you to tell us this is good for us when you're telling us, telling me that you're trying to do something good for you, and I'm telling you it's not good for my community? I notice that we don't talk about, short-term rentals are a business. They are a business. And people move into neighborhoods, they look for schools, they live to be close to businesses, but they don't necessarily like businesses on their street. When, I have a property that's now in the 14th ward, and we rehabbed it, and the people really were upset because it was a multifamily unit. But it's been there for 30-something years. I can't tell you twice that they've had any kind of problems because I'm a hands-on landlord and I manage it myself, and I'm there, and I make sure that all the people that live on the block that are residential, single-family, know me, know my name. And I tell my tenants when they rent, if you have any problem at all, I'm going to believe the people who've been living here for 30 years. Don't come and tell me, oh, they just don't like me. They live here. They can't, when you own a home, you can't pick up and move. If you live in a single-family, that is because you made a choice to live in a single-family. And everybody can't pick up and move, and especially in North St. Louis where our houses are way undervalued. So you're there for a long term, for many times, people in North St. Louis, they had to only live there because they had restrictive covenants that didn't let them live certain places and wouldn't let them live across certain lines. I represent one of those houses now, Shelley v. Kramer, right at the corner of Marcus and Labody, in which when the black people moved in there, the whites, Rights Society came and said, you can't live here because black people can't live. I live on the street. I live on a street that has a restrictive covenant that black people can't live on, that has a whole bunch of other restrictive covenant. I'm going to be okay from this legislation, but a lot of my community isn't, and they didn't sign up for this. And to me, when you change something this major, you ought to get a buy-in from the people around you. We talked about making it that you have to have a conditional use, and I think we put that in as a floor substitute, but a conditional use, and then you go to the next bill and you say, there's a right, a right to have a short-term rental undercuts any kind of conditional use. We didn't put a petition in there for the conditional use. So that's real interesting to me, that we say you have to have a conditional use, and then we say you have to have, you have a right to have it, and you change the... you have a right to have it, and you changed the zoning. They're going to disregard that conditional use, because if you have it by right, then you do not have to have a conditional use. A lot of times, black people get fooled by things that are written in legislation. They've had their land taken. They've had all kind of things happen. A lot of times, white people who don't have a lot of education, same thing has happened to them. People elect people to represent them. And so when you sit down and then you push something that the people who represent an area are saying, "This is not good for my community." My question becomes, "Why does it have to be in my community?" If it's a great idea for your community, then so do it. But if it's not a great idea, I go to the Hill. They have all kind of restaurants. I've been going to the Hill since I lived in Tower Grove back in the 70s. They have all kind of restaurants. But my community would not want that many restaurants around them like that, because it is mostly a lot of single-family residents. And so when you start bringing these businesses and gas stations and corner stores, you disturb the peace. People like to go home and enjoy the quietness of their home. They enjoy that. They want to be able to feel that their family is safe, the community is safe. And so when you come and make these kind of changes, if they don't work for my community, where is your response to that? We have a gas station that was pushing our community, and we have a store. Both of them, we didn't want, came along and said, "Oh, no, don't do it." And all these years later, we've had seven shootings at that store, seven, right around the corner from a Catholic school. And yet, we can't get it closed. So you don't know the concerns and adversity that people in North St. Louis put up with. And so then, when you get studies that says 29 black families are leaving a month from the city of St. Louis, you're not saying, "Okay, well, maybe this is not a good idea to push this in North St. Louis." You're saying, "We got to fix it wherever I am, and if that's a hardship on you, I don't care." Then we're not a city. What we are, being very selfish and self-centered, we're not a city. The mayor could not get elected in North St. Louis. I would invite her to come and run. Any of you all who are pushing this, come and run. I can almost guarantee you, none of you could get elected there. But yet, you're supposed to override the representatives that live in our community and say, "This is good for me, and so I want it to be good. I want it to be for everybody." That is not the solution. It does not even have to be the solution. They push so much liquor in North St. Louis that, back in the 90s, we started to do moratoriums. Mary Ross was the first one to do one, and she was the 5th Ward Alderwoman. Almost most, all of North St. Louis has liquor moratoriums, because we had so much liquor pushed into our community. And then people will say, "Well, you needed a store there." And so I said, "So then, why don't you put a grocery store with meat, potatoes, and milk, and eggs? Why do you have all that liquor that comes along with it? Why do you let it stay open to 24 hours, when my neighborhood closes down at 8:00? Because you're not trying to do what's in the best interest of my community, and you don't care that it's not. If your solution is to push something down our throats that we do not want, and it is not in the best interest, this is a city that is broken, and you're going to continue to bleed people, and people are going to move out. And as you continue to push these things, you're going to lose the taxpayer base, not just black taxpayers, but white taxpayers. When I got here, we had 400,000 people. We're under 300,000 people now, and going down. That is not a good thing for a city. We come up with these ideas. I just told you the whole thing about having an election and making sure that you have to run twice, even when there was only two people. We talked about this ad infinitum. Yes, it is passed. And not only did I talk about it, I put it in writing. But nobody cared. They just want to do what they want to do. Okay, go ahead and do what you want to do. But it is going to hurt this community, my community. I also think it's going to hurt some of you all who live in communities such as Skinker de Bolivar, where somebody who is a law professor, I'm sorry, not law professor, expert in this bill, is calling me and talking to me and sending me stuff, saying, "Sharon, you did a good job to talk about the single families. That should not be included." And also, I'm surprised that the people who represent me would do something like that, because that's not what we thought would happen. Keep pushing the taxpayers out. You think that's a great idea? We're going to have a city with no taxpayer base. You cannot pay for the services that you so dearly want if you don't have a taxpayer base. And the taxpayers, it's not fair for me to move on a single-family zone residential street, and then you say, "But now we want to put all these other things about it." In fact, even the adjacent F neighborhood commercial that is adjacent to a single-family or B, two-family, says that it has to be in the best interest of, for the good of the surrounding community. It's not supposed to be just to make business decisions. And short-term rental, make no mistake, is a business decision. And when you're wanting to put everything over the interests of the people who are already there, we are always trying to get more people or different people, but we failed many, many times to look out for the people who are already here and who've been here. Don't get tax abatement. Don't qualify for any of the programs we have. And then they get tired, and then they start to leave. I've had five such people that I begged not to leave, leave my community in the last two years, and I expect more. When we have all these rentals and all these houses, instead of being beautiful houses in the 49, 48, 4700 blocks, 50, 51, we're going to have a city that is just desolate almost. And then maybe we'll come back in two years and say, "Yeah, didn't Sharon say that? Oh, yeah. But we needed to fix downtown." So as long as we fix downtown, we don't care what else happens to the other neighborhoods. So I am continually going to be opposed to this. This is not a solution. We did not have a problem, so we weren't looking for a solution. And anytime you will not allow people to opt out of it, then there's another agenda going on. I can't kind of figure what it is, because one thing that will happen is that people who live in a single-family vote. They vote a lot higher than most other people. So there's a way to vote, not just with your feet, but to actually go to the polls. And I hope people take this into account, when they remember this, of how we are now undermining the zoning that's been in place for so long. And again, I am in opposition of it, and I want to take particular target at the conditional use requirement we put in. It does not mean anything if then you turn around and say, "By right," in the next board bill, which is 34.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. As many of my colleagues, all of my colleagues know, excuse myself from this particular issue, so I'll be abstaining from voting on the matter. But as a citizen, as an elected official, I still have First Amendment rights to discuss my thoughts on things. And I do have to share that, even just over the past week, since this was perfected, I've had more conversations with constituents, where I've shared with them my recusal on the matter. But also, one conversation recently that struck me, and I know it's true for many people in areas of North St. Louis and Southeast City, is that this particular constituent, and I'm not sure if she's here today, she said that she was going to try to be, but she's a teacher. And they had, I believe, Parent Teacher Conference Day today, so she was hoping that she might be able to make it. But if she's here, thank you for being here. If not, totally understand. But she lets out a unit in her place for Airbnb to help pay her mortgage, to help pay her bills, and to be able to keep the roof over her head. And I know that's true for many neighbors of mine. One of the things that I have struggled with, one, I've heard the issues and the concerns predominantly from residents in the central corridor and others, and areas that I would say don't have issues with vacancy, don't have issues with investment, and are generally neighborhoods that are very attractive for folks to purchase. Their purchase prices have remained pretty high. Those are areas where Airbnb absolutely, 100%, should be restricted or regulated with respect to how people are allowed to let out their homes if they're owner-occupied, restrict them if they're not owner-occupied, things of that nature. But you have whole swaths of the city, whole entire neighborhoods, that have vacancy rates that are 10, 20, 30, 40, 60% in some cases, where almost entire blocks have seen disinvestment over decades. And there are no hotels for people to stay in. There are no businesses for people to visit. The folks that come to stay in those communities are generally people who are looking for family, staying with family, or finding an affordable place to stay, because they can't afford hotels, or they can't afford an Airbnb in Soulard, or The Hill, or Benton Park, or St. Louis Hills, or Holly Hills, or Tower Grove South, or any number of other neighborhoods that haven't seen the level of disinvestment that North St. Louis and Southeast City have had. There were very easy ways to address some of the concerns, and I don't believe that we've gone down a path that's going to be fair and equitable for communities that have seen vacancies rise continually, struggle to maintain not just homeowners, but renters. Market rate in certain parts of the city is much higher than market rate in other parts of the city. And to be able to take a property that was vacant on your block, buy it, and invest in it, and rehab it, and turn it around to a place that is inviting, not just for people to potentially stay short-term, but also for the neighbors who live around there that don't have to deal with all of the issues that happen in a vacant property, drug dealing, sex work, the unhoused, taking shelter. All of these things play a role in whether or not people choose to live in our communities with a plethora of other reasons. And this will hurt some of my neighbors. It might hurt me. I don't know. I'm still trying to kind of figure out how this might impact myself. Many of you know, I live next to a vacant property. I've lived in my neighborhood for almost 20 years. And when I bought my house on Tennessee Avenue, the property next door to me was vacant. It had been vacant for a couple of years, changed hands over a period of a decade, probably six times. It was very difficult. I took care of it as best I could, trimming the bushes out front. I have no hedges in my yard, but I have a hedge trimmer to trim hedges on vacant properties in my neighborhood, to make them try to look nice for the kids that live on my street, so they don't have to feel like they're growing up in a place that nobody cares about. Think about that. And these properties are just sitting there, vacant, empty, and falling apart. There was a horrible windstorm, tornadoes and whatnot. I believe it was in 2007. Part of the parapet wall for this building fell down. I saved what I could of the terracotta molding and decorative bricks. So in the eventuality that someone came around and bought the property to deal with it, I could give it to them, so that they could try and maintain the historical nature of that property. I ended up buying that property after threatening litigation against the owner. And at the time, the market did not even allow me to go get a bank loan for this property. So many of you on this board don't even realize, there are still communities in North St. Louis and Southeast City where you cannot get loans based off of the value of the properties. And if you want to invest in those properties, you can't. Not with a bank loan. You have to put your own money into that. It took three years of this very, I'll call it hot real estate market, for my home to even get to the price that I originally paid for it. The house that I lived in, that I bought 20 years ago, after that Great Recession in 2008, it still had not appreciated. 10 years later, to the point where I had paid for it, I was upside down in my house. So the house, the two-family next door, I'm upside down in it again. Here I am, upside down in it again. It was vacant, renting it at market rate. I'm not sure if I would be able to make that financially work. But it is what it is. And I'm abstaining from this. I'm going to vote in abstention. But I commend my colleague, actually, from the 12th Ward. She and I see things a little bit differently sometimes. But oftentimes, when it comes to areas where we've seen this disinvestment, and it's hard, when you're living in these communities, to help people understand that investing is hard in the city. I've often spoke about building code changes, things of that nature, and how I'm working with neighbors right now on some properties along Virginia Avenue, and trying to bring businesses in the neighborhood. And just getting things up to code in the city of St. Louis is expensive. And when you don't have the value, the after-rehab value on these properties, you can't get a loan for them. You have to put your own money into that, if you have it. And most people don't. So unfortunately, a lot of folks, I'd say probably the majority, supermajority of folks have to get a bank loan. And if you can't get a bank loan, then you're not able to. So we continually see the perpetuation of disinvestment in communities in North St. Louis, Southeast City, because we put barriers in place for these types of investments to happen. And I agree. Airbnbs have caused issues in a lot of communities. They have. They 100% have. And I wouldn't say the majority of owners, though, are the problem. I think it's a minority population of problem owners, whether those are corporations, venture capitalist firms, et cetera, that are taking advantage of this. And Airbnb isn't the only platform that's out there, and this bill somewhat addresses that. But there are also times where a mom-and-pop person, someone who's a small-time investor in a neighborhood, and I've had this happen with my own Airbnb, someone rents it, and then they decide that they want to move into it. And it becomes a month-to-month or a long-term lease situation. Well, that person is already paying for the quote-unquote privilege of being an Airbnb in the neighborhood. It would restrict people's opportunity to be able to do that. So I have a lot of questions about this. I have a lot of concerns about it. I am deeply concerned about how it might impact investment in places like North St. Louis and Southeast City. But I agree that we do need restrictions and regulations around these. So I do look forward to seeing how this is implemented. And I appreciate everyone's input as we've gone through this process. It has been many, many, many years. And then just, I guess, lastly, on my recusal here, I feel, and I've mentioned this before, I feel like we're applying Prop R very inconsistently down here. Prop R, as I've mentioned before, would require anyone on the Board of Aldermen to recuse themselves from voting in the event that they have a financial or personal interest, potential financial or personal interest pending before the board. Literally, in the case of a short-term rental, anyone who owns a property could be a short-term rental operator, literally anyone. If you have a spare bedroom, a couch, you own a duplex, and you have a downstairs available, literally, you could be a short-term rental owner. You could potentially have the personal or financial benefit of this. So I have to say, I'm erring on the side of caution, because I do believe in transparency. I do believe in being open with folks. But Prop R has some real issues, and I do believe that we are applying it very inconsistently as a board. I don't think that all of us, when, another kind of facet to Prop R is, whenever there's a board bill that's introduced, and I became pretty familiar with this after these board bills were introduced, but at the time of introduction, any one of us, where there's a potential conflict of financial or personal benefit, are supposed to fill out a form with our legal counsel. I'm probably the only person on this board that has actually taken the opportunity to complete that form. It's absolutely mind-blowing to me, the inconsistencies that are here. But I'm deviating from the bills themselves, so I appreciate the indulgence there. But I do appreciate the comment, the feedback, the efforts that have been put into this. I certainly wish that there would have been a little bit more consideration for North St. Louis and Southeast City, and that maybe we start applying for North St. Louis and Southeast City, and that maybe we start applying like the EG, the Economic Justice Index to more of the work that we do down here at, at the Board of Aldermen. But, you know, certainly, again, want to just let folks know, even though I'm abstaining, I do support regulation and restriction. But I do think that we need to be more thoughtful about how we apply those going forward. Thank you.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to passing these regulations today. I think it's long overdue, and I, I do want to push back against the point that this is just for downtown. I represent several neighborhoods, including the Central West End and Forest Park Southeast. We are inundated with short-term rentals that have taken away from our supply of housing, causing prices to rise, and contributed to threats to public safety. These regulations that we put in place in this bill are strong, they're enforceable, we've made sure of that. And I've really enjoyed working with the sponsor on this to just make this the best bill it can be. I reviewed through this bill as if a, a short-term rental was opening up next to me. And I wanted to make sure that there were mechanisms in place to rein in any kind of bad behavior that really contributes to what we perceive as the negative side of these things. But the Alderman from the 3rd has made some excellent points about the benefits that a well-managed short-term rental can bring to the city, and I think this bill allows for that as well. We've done a great job at compromising and finding a middle space to meet here and create good legislation that applies to the whole city. And I fully support it and look forward to passing these rules so that we can bring order to this end. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
I want to thank the Alderman from the 3rd. Speaking about the nice, beautiful neighborhoods in mostly Central Quarter, some downtown, some south of St. Louis. The thing what always gets on my nerves is that people don't know about the beautiful neighborhoods in North St. Louis. For years, and years, and years, Kingsway East, anybody black who knows, who grew up in St. Louis knows that Kingsway East was the place. It only became messed up and, and one part of it is horrific now because this Board of Aldermen, back in 2001, divided my neighborhood down the middle of Euclid. They put the people who live in the 47 and 4800 block of all the streets in Kingsway East into the 4th Ward. They left the 4900 block in a different ward. They split my ward into five wards. I now have all of the old 20th Ward back, the real 20th Ward. In 2001, when this Board of Aldermen did that, we didn't lose any population. In fact, just the opposite, we were one of two black wards that did not lose population. And the other one was the 2nd Ward, which has had North Point, Baden, and other neighborhoods in North St. Louis that nobody even knows about that have beautiful houses, Kingsway West, Penrose, Mark Twain. Whenever the press speaks of North St. Louis, they say North St. Louis. Whenever they speak about other parts of the community, they say Mark Twain, I mean, they say Tower Grove, Tower Grove East, then Benton Park, they no neighborhoods. But we're just one bit blob on the map. And that is because people don't care. I just heard the Alderman say, what a wonderful compromise. It is not a wonderful compromise when the people who represent North St. Louis are telling you, this is not good for us. That is a domination, and that is ignoring the people who represent North St. Louis. That is a thought that I know more about those people than the people who they elected to represent them. And especially when you look at that, who's the longest serving person here who had her rights and all her community's rights stripped away, and then was able to come back here? That is not compromise, that is dominance, that is installing a force in your country and saying, this is a country in the middle of your country kind of thing. Okay? It does not work. When I first came down here, we would do all kinds of zoning things and all kinds of development, and we took a lot of block grant money. And we, it should have gone to North St. Louis, it went to downtown and the Central Quarter. And we didn't put money, and I would always raise the same objections that I'm raising now. And I would tell then-President Tom Villa that, one day you're going to see this was not the right thing to do. I had a chance to come back in 2013 after being gone, gone from the board for 10 years. And Tom Villa, one of the first things he said to me is, Tias, the things that you said were absolutely spot on. They're not just because I think so, because I've decided, because I've worked on this for a long time, I'm mayor to a city planner. We planned in the Kingsway West, East, and Penrose neighborhood, which I've originally operated under, on the 20th Ward, we planned on addressing things that we didn't have. So we built a grocery store, we built a Walgreens, we built a new school, all the first that had ever been built in North St. And my community remained stable, and they loved it. And then this Board of Aldermen came and tore it up for no reason at all. Every place around me lost 4,000, 5,000, 3,000, but we didn't. And the only North St. Louis ward that didn't do that was then called the 2nd Ward. There were always middle-class, upper-middle-class black communities in North St. Louis in which black people lived. They couldn't live anyplace else because they weren't allowed to. And that was then called the 2nd Ward, the 27th Ward, the 1st Ward, the 20th Ward, the 21st Ward. Those were very middle-class black communities. And they were undermined, okay? They were undermined, he's just told me a point of order. But I want to just finish, and then I'll go, I'm addressing what the Alderman said from the 3rd. They were undermined because people in this Board of Aldermen and this city government thought that they knew better. I, I thank him for saying that we should be more mindful of Southwest and North St. Louis. We should. But we should be more mindful when the people tell you, this is not a good idea. You shouldn't say, well, I need to fix mine, so I don't care what happens. The thing that the Alderman in the 3rd talked about was that the lady, one of the persons that he represents, I think, says that she needs to do rental to supplement her income. But as I understood it, it's, she lived in that property. That's what my community said. If you're going to do this, make it so that you're within 500 feet of living against that property. I live in, within the 500 feet of that property. That was the story I told about the Domino's, that when the owner of Domino's came and lived by his nuisance property, then he agreed to everything. That's the whole point of requiring people to live near their, their businesses or what they, because then you find out that the people who are saying this is a problem, it's, they're not just saying it because they don't want to live next to somebody, it is a problem. So then, if you got a solution that I don't need, and you're pressing it, there's another agenda. Right now, my neighborhood is becoming very hot. And we still have been able to keep, because we've been able to keep mostly homeowner-occupied in my 4900 blocks for a lo, a long time. And they are mostly a single family. They're going to be affected negatively by that. And even the people who have short-term rentals don't want that, and they are already operating them, and they don't want that. Why is the city insisting that this one thing, a one solution fits all? I've never found that to be. I don't wear the same size as my husband, we don't wear the same clothes, because one size does not fit all. Your children have a place in your life, because one size does not fit all. You don't, you're not forced to, if you observe certain kind of religion, you don't go to one church, because one size does not fit all. We have zoning because one size does not fit all. One size is not a good solution, except for somebody who has another agenda. If we are going to, let me see here, we're not monolithic in North St. Louis, is what I want to know, for people to know. The neighborhoods make a difference of where you live and why it was zoned, and it's made a difference of why you chose to live someplace. If we then go about changing that, we ought to give people an opportunity to say, this is not what we want. I don't believe I saw, if, Madam, Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 4th would yield for a minute?
Alderman from the 4th, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
I will.
Alderwoman from the 12th, is there an emergency clause in this legislation?
There is no longer an emergency clause in the.
I love it, because that means you can go out and walk a petition against this legislation. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sure thing.
I've gone over all the reasons. I read the lawyer, his name, and I didn't, couldn't remember it before, so I want to acknowledge.
Marvin Nodif?
Yes, I make, I'm sure that you're right, mister, and if you're not, I'm going to blame it on you.
He's, he's one of them.
Okay, Mr. Marvin Nodif? Nodif made some very good points. If anybody didn't get, he, he not only had them send a letter to me, he said some things that he had done as research and part of a law review article from a Wash U student about this very issue that was right on point, and said many of the, many of the things that I said last week, and I didn't write the article. He does this for, he's been doing this for a living for 30 years. He actually knows my professor, Mandelker, who, one of the people that I took in law school about land use. There are actually, when you go to planning courses, they have courses called How to Plan for the Black Community. For the last 30 years, my husband is a certified city planner, we went to these things, we went to them in Canada, we went to them in Detroit, Chicago, to learn about why is it that in black communities that they are run down, you could start out in a really nice community and then they're run down? And most of it is, starts right where we are here today, because it starts in City Hall, and for people who do not listen to the people. So what happens is, when middle-class people move in communities, and then, and they're black, and they move into a black community, and you do not listen to them, and then they feel frustrated, they do, just like white middle-class people do. They move, but because there's less places for them to move, they tend to move out to county. And that's how North County got a lot of where we live now. So, and that's happening more and more with white people in South St. Louis. And if you keep doing this, and you keep not giving the people who have been long-term stakeholders a chance to say, hey, this is not good for me, or you say, I don't care if you say this is not good for me, and I don't care if your representatives say it, because although we do all of this, oh, we're going to take it out to the people, we are the representatives of the people. And so when the Alderwoman from the 13th, and the 11th, and the 12th says, North St. Louis don't want it, that's the representatives. And so why are we pushing it? This is a bad bill, the way it is. It really could have been better by saying, if we're going to have short-term rental in a single family, that you have to live within 500 feet, or next door, or something like that, that is a much better way to do it. Because people don't tend to want the things that are nuisances next door to them. And as soon as they become a nuisance and they live next door to them, they then want to make it go away, much as they did with the Domino's. There was a, a statement by the Alderman from the 9th about, you know, policing and things like that. We don't get the same kind of policing. Although I want to say, we've gotten better policing in these last year than we've had in a long time, but we don't get a lot of times, and I want to say that's thanks to Major Cousins. He's done a really, really great job, and I appreciate it. And my captains, Marx and McAfee, Peter, McAteer. Very good jobs, I appreciate it. And they've worked really hard, but a lot of times you don't get the policing you need. So when these things become problems, they don't do anything. So when you are privileged enough to live someplace where you don't know that that doesn't happen, you make statements that really don't make any sense as it relates to North St. Louis. And if you don't own anything and you don't live in it, you can be easy-peasy to dismiss what people are saying. But I don't dismiss it. And I listen to my community, and the fact that the person who actually had a short-term rental and lives one block from me picked it up and said, Sharon, I'd prefer to give my short-term rental up than to just say blanketly, you could have a short-term rental in, in, in class, in a Zone A single family. That is not a good idea. And he's doing it right now already, but he's doing it right next door to him, and that makes a very big difference. I stand opposed to this legislation, and for those who don't live in North St. Louis, I would ask them not to speak for us.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 3rd.
I just have one statement. Because I'm reading this bill, and so you are dealing with a problem that's focused on downtown. Let's be realistic, it's about downtown. When James Page was the alderperson, he called me and told me how the shootings, and how the craziness was downtown, and I said, welcome to my world. We've been dealing with it in North St. Louis for over 20 years. I said, and so you can't do cookie cutter legislation for a whole city that it doesn't apply in those areas. North St. Louis is dealing with enough issues on their own. We have the nuisance properties, we have the drug houses, we have the landlords that have vacated our, their properties. And as Alderman Shane said, you have people that have just abandoned properties, and now we have vacant properties sitting there. So now we're on the verge of looking at, we got people that's going to be in these places, setting them on fire, trying to stay warm. So I, in, in regards to this bill, I just think that people need to pay attention to what's going on, and it's about downtown, it's about Central West End, it's about those communities that are impacted. It's not about us being impacted. And so my question is, when are we going to be looked at to say what's going on in our community has been going on too long, and we don't need to make, let this happen? So I'm against it, because no, now you're bringing more challenges to our community that we can't get past the challenges that we have. We have communities in North St. Louis that you would think you in the Central West End, you would think you in Ladoo, you would think you in Clayton, because those people take pride in those communities. And so now you're telling those people, forget what you're doing, even though your property value is half what it was, you're going to now get some more issues coming in your community. So I think people need to pay attention when they do things, and quit putting Band-Aids on a cancer. And so it seems like that's what these people are doing, young legislators are doing. They keep trying to hurry up and fix stuff. And so I just think we need to revisit this, look at it more in detail to say, how can we really address the Airbnb issues that we have in our community? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing now, Alderman from the 4th, you are a recognized close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We've heard a lot of discussion on this over the last five years now. We, we've had bills on this introduced in three different sessions, we've had town hall meetings, there's been an online portal, we've heard from, we, we've heard from the public many, many times on this. Even here today, we've heard pretty competing interests in this in between what the Alderman from the 3rd Ward had to say about investment in his community, and what the Alderwoman from the 12th said about wanting to protect against nuisance properties. What this bill does is tries to balance that on a, on a razor's edge to both encourage investment in communities by saying you can invest into a property and, and do this while giving the building division the authority to, to move on nuisance properties, and not through the typical problem property way that we, we move on, on problem properties, but by creating a permit, and then the ability to revoke that permit. And just like any other business in the city of St. Louis, when a permit is revoked, the city can move in and shut it down. That's what this is about. And, you know, I, I've heard from some of my colleagues, this is about downtown. Sure, downtown is an issue, but it's an issue throughout a, a lot of our, our city. We saw it in the committee hearings, the heat map of where these were. This is not just a downtown issue. I think if you talk to, to many of us, I, I know my colleague from the, the Hill, the 5th Ward, you know, he has issues with, with short-term rentals in his community. I know I have them in my community, I know Alderman Browning has them in his community. I know over and over from, from discussions that we've had over the last I know, over and over, from discussions that we've had over the last five years now, that virtually all of us have some sort of issue with party houses, short-term rentals, things of that nature in our communities, and we want the ability to just shut them down if need be. And this is an avenue to do that, to bring peace back to some neighborhoods. The idea that because, that these aren't there already is absurd to me. I mean, we've seen now, even the alderwoman from the 12th now say, "Oh, one of these is on my street." Next street over, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Whereas, you know, last week, there was discussion, "These aren't on my streets, we have protective covenants." Nothing in this stops a protective covenant. But it sounds like your neighbor is running a solid short-term rental that you may not have even been aware existed before this. We want to carve out space for good operators to act while being able to shut down rogue actors. That's really the spirit of this, the core of this legislation, is turning control back over to neighborhoods. And with that, I ask for your favorable consideration.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 4th, seconded by the alderwoman from the 7th, that we third-read and finally passed Board Bill 33, floor substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. 11 aye votes, 3 no votes, and 1 abstain.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderman from the 4th, and third-read and finally passed Board Bill Number 33, floor substitute as amended.
Board Bill 34, sponsored by Alderman Orion, President Green. Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Velazquez and Alderwoman Sanyay. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission of the City of St. Louis pertaining to the zoning code of the City of St. Louis enacted in a new chapter 26.76 on the subject of short-term rental with definitions and establishing short-term rental as permitted use in all zones in the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 4th, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 34.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. For brevity's sake, I'll just ditto everything I just said on 33. This is the companion bill. I ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 8th. Oh, sorry, was there a second on that? Okay, seconded by the alderwoman from the 7th. Alderwoman from the 12th, is your hand up? Okay, Alderwoman from the 12th.
Oh, so the alderwoman from the 8th didn't-
She said she did not need to speak.
Okay. If the alderman from, Madam President, members of the board, if the alderman from the 4th would yield?
The alderman from the 4th yielded questioning from the alderwoman from the 12th.
Yes.
So last, yeah, last week, we put an amendment on Board Bill 33 for conditional use, and that's why we have a floor substitute. Is that correct?
Well, there was already a floor substitute, but that conditional use made it as amended.
Right, as amended, I'm sorry. Okay, and so, but then, in this particular bill, we say that short-term rentals are permitted use in all zones of the City of St. Louis. Is that correct?
That's what 34 says, yes.
Right. So why would you have to have a conditional use hearing if it's a permitted use? I thought the conditional use hearings were if it were not permitted uses.
So 33 is really the controlling piece of legislation here. 34 is about, is the zoning commission, or, excuse me, the planning commission's recommendations on how we do this. 33 puts in more stringent requirements that must be met.
So it is your contention that even though we're defining short-term rentals as a permitted use, that 33, by saying it requires a conditional use, will control that?
That's my understanding from talking to the building division and the city councilor's office.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That's my understanding from talking to the building division and through discussions with the city councilor's office.
Okay. I will be surprised at that, because the whole point of conditional uses are uses that are not used by rights. So that is a conflict of definition to me. So we will see what happens. I'm glad we're making this, a record of this, so we can then go on later and bring this up, which then they will tell us, Missouri is a plain letter law state. So whatever the written terms are, that's what they will be. So I don't believe them at all when they say that. I believe that this is the legislation that attempts to, not only attempts, does permit short-term rentals in all zones of the City of St. Louis. And I don't believe that 33 will prevail over this. Also, you also put in this board bill that this ordinance amends 26.08 of the revised code of the City of St. Louis by adding a cross-reference in the definition section for short-term rental uses, as well as adding this new chapter to the zoning code. Can you tell me about that?
That's all on recommendation of the planning commission. This bill came as a bill through the planning commission, which is something that we had to do before we could really do anything with 33. We needed this companion bill, 34. So they have to, they go hand-in-hand, essentially. And so the planning commission recommended that bill. That bill was untouched prior to the filing of it. That is a bill that the planning commission recommended. We filed, and we first-read, went through committee, second-read, perfected, and now we're here.
Okay, I understand that it came through the planning commission. I've said that quite a few times. What I'm asking you is, what does it mean when it says this ordinance also amends 26.08 of the revised code of the City of St. Louis by adding a cross-reference in the definition section for short-term rental-related uses, as well as adding this new chapter to the zoning title 2627?
I think it speaks for itself.
Okay, so I don't think it's, so I was hoping that you could make me understand it better, because it's a long, gobbledygook thing to me, and I'm trying to understand. So what I'm understanding is, is that the ordinance amends 2608 of the revised code of the City of St. Louis by adding a cross-reference in the definition section. So I'm trying to figure out, what is the cross-reference in the definition section for short-term rentals? Is it in 26.08, or is it someplace else?
I would have to have the bill in front of me to answer the specifics there. Let me see if I can pull it up.
So while you're doing that, so when I'm looking at the definition of 2608, the following definitions are hereby added to the chapter 2608 of the revised code. 2608.385 Dwelling Unit Short-Term Rental. Short-Term Rental Agent, Short-Term Rental Non-Ocupied, Short-Term Rental Occupied, Short-Term Rental Owner, Short-Term Rental Permit, Short-Term Rental Unit. See chapters 26.76 for definitions. Okay, so, so then it says B, the definition of signs, so it goes through that. But I don't see where 2608 does any kind of cross-reference. So maybe the cross-reference is in 26.76, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Alderwoman, I think if you look at page, page 1, line 14, you'll see the following definitions added to chapter 26.08.
Yes, okay, I see that. But then it talks about the cross-reference. So I'm wondering, is that the purpose of this chapter, which is on page 2 of 4? 26.76 is to find and address the location establishments and operations of short-term rentals in order to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the City of St. Louis. Is that what the cross-reference is to?
I think if you look down to chapter, or, excuse me, page 1, line 18, that's where that cross-reference is in 26.76, the C chapter 26.76 for definitions.
So then they're saying that it's not in Section 1, it's in 26.76. Is it in all of 26.76? Because I see 26.76, we got 020. There's other parts of it. So, I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying to-
No, 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 yeah.
That, sometimes we don't write good-
You know, this came directly from the city councilor's office through the, yes, this is not my drafting.
Okay, all right. So anyway, it talks about that this is not a hotel, or motel, or RV park, or da-da-da. To any person for transient other than is in a permitted bed and breakfast, ongoing month-to-month, Tennessee, and a home exchange for which there is no payment, Your Honor. So short-term rental allows residential occupancy of the dwelling for a term of 30 days or less, requires that short-term rental use is permitted to operate pursuant to a current invalid permit filed within the city. Okay, so, and then the city is supposed to, the building commissioner is supposed to then come up with some kind of procedure?
So the building, in 33, it lays out that the building commissioner promulgates rules which are approved by BPS. And that's all, you know, the standard administrative rulemaking process.
And so until the building commissioner puts rules into effect, no new short-term rentals can?
So the idea is certainly for the building commissioner to promulgate rules, and BPS to approve those rules before the effective date laid out in the ordinance.
Okay, so then, if I wanted to start one right now, I couldn't, because there was-
Right now, it's unregulated. We could start one right now.
Right, so it doesn't affect the ones that are already in effect, right?
It, once there's an, once we hit the effective date of this legislation, all short-term rentals will need to be permitted. Right now, there is no regulation.
That's what I'm saying. So right now, the ones that are operating, not, doesn't come under this legislation at this point?
Right now, there is no legislation affecting short-term rentals in the City of St. Louis.
Until, so I hear you. So then that means the ones that are operating don't come under this legislation, as of now. Neither, if I wanted to start a short-term rental tomorrow, it would not come under, is that correct?
Nope, it wouldn't be effective yet.
But once we get rules, then the new ones would come under this legislation? Would also, the ones that are already operating, come under this legislation as to enforcement? Because they wouldn't have gotten a-
There is no, like, grandfather clause in, if that's what you're looking for. So on the effective date, any short-term rental operating within the City of St. Louis will have to comply with the regulations laid out in 33 and 34.
And so how, under the effective date, how would I then apply for, get a short-term rental?
So the building division is working, assuming this passes, the building division will be working. At the moment, the idea is an online portal to apply for permits, the same way that some other permits are applied for through the building division. The commissioner, director Oswald, excuse me, has been in discussions, informal discussions. You are correct, yes. Commissioner Oswald, excuse me, has been in informal discussions with third-party vendors to address some of these issues, knowing that we, that there are third-party vendors that have been dealing with this in other cities effectively. And my understanding is that he intends to contract with some of them as we move forward, assuming that this is signed into law by our mayor.
Okay, and so that's good for the ones that are new. What happens to the people who were already operating? Well, then they have to go and apply for a rental use permit?
Yes, ma'am.
And so they're not grandfathered in, and the city councilor said that was okay?
There is no grandfather clause in this. If you operate a short-term rental after the effective date, you will need a permit.
So we're writing law for people who already are doing things. Is that what I'm understanding?
We are regulating an industry.
That has already been occurring, is what I'm saying. Because there's been all kind of laws that say you can't come back, and that many things are grandfathered, because they were already operating. So in this case, we're saying that is not going to be the case.
This is not an ex post facto law. This is saying, this is a business that's in the City of St. Louis.
Point of order. Please state your point of order.
Point of order, isn't the issue about permits in Board Bill 33, not 34?
Yes, if we could, please, keep the topic to the zoning language that is in 30.
Read the legislation, that's where I got it from, I'm reading directly from it. So that is not the only place it is referred to. Okay, as I was saying. So, short-term rental does not apply to a hotel, or motel, or RV park. Is that correct?
They are specifically exempt from this definition.
So it's also not for timeshare, institutional dwelling, bed and breakfast, also are not included?
Bed and breakfast, we have regulations that have been on the book for quite some time regarding bed and breakfast specifically.
So can, so what is the difference between a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental?
Bed and breakfast serve food.
Serve food, and do the people traditionally live in them a lot of times?
That is, I don't believe, I'd have to go back and look, it's been some time I read the specific definition on bed and breakfast. But I remember the big difference in between the two. The thing that I would hang my hat on is the serving of breakfast in the morning. I think in a bed and breakfast, they either can or cannot live in them. I don't think there's a requirement that-
And just to, the whole permitting process, just to reiterate, I'm looking at page 2 of 4, and it talks about the permit process in this board bill. So short-term rental non-occupied, is that treated in the same way that short-term rent occupied is?
No.
What's the difference?
The difference is, non, in short-term rental occupied, that is your full-time resident. And say you were to go on vacation for a few weeks, you could rent out that space. So kind of the true, the initial spirit of Airbnb was for people to say, "Oh, you know, I have a desirable home, and when I go on vacation, I don't care if a stranger lives there."
Okay, so like, in some places, they also trade, like, if you go on someplace, and they may trade it?
Sure.
And, but other than the definition, is there any really difference in how they're treated? Be it owner occupied, or non-occupied?
Yeah, the owner occupied is not subject to the same permitting requirement. So you can, you can basically always rent out the place that you live in full-time just because you have a property right to that. That's no longer a business, that's yours. But when you have kind of the investment property where you don't reside there, that's a business, and we can regulate that much more strangely.
But as you say, that, but if there are restrictive covenants, or neighborhood restrictions for that, then you can't do that. Is that correct?
I, I, I'm not aware of any restrictive covenants on an individual renting their home, but if there are, that individual needs to abide by restrictive covenant on their, any legal restrictive covenants on, because there are illegal restrictive covenants, certainly.
Oh, yes, like, black people can't live on Mappet Place.
Yes, ma'am, exactly. I wanted to be clear on that, that not all of them are enforceable.
That's why we have Shelley V. Kramer, that says, "Black people can live at 46." Here in St. Louis, with Margaret Bush Wilson- Margaret Bush Wilson, father and others, that was a landmark Supreme Court case, making sure that black people could live where they wanted to, and not just black people, other people who they restricted. If you go to the Central West End, they had laws about Jewish people couldn't live on one street, they had laws that other people couldn't live on one street. In fact, if you look at the Chase Park Plaza, there's a reason why it's a chase and a park plaza, because Jewish people were not allowed in the chase, I believe it was, and they built the park plaza right next to.
Yes, ma'am.
St. Louis has a long history of leaving people out. So again, thank you very much, I appreciate your answering the questions. I will have to say that in speaking, last time, the alderman referred to the fact that I didn't know about the short-term rental that was on Northland, the street over. I did, it wasn't a problem, so we didn't have, that's what I said, we didn't have problems in our neighborhoods with him, not a problem because he lives next door to it, we don't have it on Maffet Place, and we're going to continue not to have it on Maffet Place. And you left out the part where the guy who called me was the person who says he's opposed to us having them without the requirement that they live next door and didn't understand why we were expanding that. He had a lot of hard times even just putting it on Northland, but the people knew that he was there if there is a problem. So he was not, he's not in favor of your legislation because it does not require if you're going to be, have it in a single family, that the people be there. And it is a business, I'm a landlord, it is a business. Renting out is a business. Trading your house for another place and so you can stay is a business. In fact, if you don't believe, start asking the IRS. If you do that, they tax you for that kind of things, because a lot of times people thought they could barter and get away with it, and the IRS will appear at your door, this is a business. We are monetizing things that maybe shouldn't be, residence ought to be where you live, and that's why we separated residents and businesses in many of the zoning. Some of them are mixed, you get to mixed use, especially when you get to G, D, E, I don't, you know, right, GH or whatever it is, it becomes a business and a residence. But when you're at A, single family, and even B, two-family, that is why people thought they were buying into the residential neighborhoods. And so saying that this is good because this is a good compromise, when one whole part of the city is saying it is not a compromise, it's not good business, and then given a conditional use, and then saying, but it's a use by right undermines the amendment we made, which I did vote for in 33, but then would not take that language out of 34 undermines the compromising spirit of what everybody keeps saying we should have. What they really mean is when we tell you what's good for North St. Louis, we don't matter, we don't care how bad it is, and how much the people who represent it say it's not, we're going to do it anyway. And that is what is wrong with the city of St. Louis and why we continue to lose population. Not only am I opposed to 33, I am even more so opposed to 34.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to thank everyone, all my colleagues and all the members of the public who did come out and make sure that their voice was heard on these issues over the last five years. I want to thank my colleagues who have worked on this before me, and want to remind everyone that without 34 passing, nothing that we've done in 33 matters. With that, I ask for your favorable consideration, and I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the alderman from the fourth, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we third-read and finally pass Board Bill 34. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Hearing no objections. There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Abstain.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Valesquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. 10 aye votes, three no votes, and one abstain.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderman from the fourth and have third-read and finally passed Board Bill 34. Reported the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill 100 as amended, 102 Committee sub, 118, 121, 99, 33 Floor sub as amended, and Board Bill 34.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that become law. Right. Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules and introduce Resolution 137.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 14th, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution Number 137. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Valesquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Keys. 11 aye votes and four voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the alderman from the 14th. Please place Resolution Number 137 at the end of the first reading of resolutions.
So noted.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 133 sponsored by Alderman Con, solidarity with the people of Israel and the people of Palestine.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution Number 133.
Thank you, Madam President. Resolution Number 133, we, I, thank you, I request unanimous consent on Resolution Number 133.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent. Alderman, would you like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
I, I, that's a tough question. I would be open to sending this to committee. I'll go ahead and request that we send this to the legislation committee.
There's been a motion to send to the legislation committee, is there a second? It's been moved by the alderman from the third, seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh, that we send Resolution Number 133 to the legislation committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In committee, you, the public is allowed to speak. In full board meetings, the public is not allowed to speak.
So, point of, yeah, point of, yeah. Point of, yes, yes. Hold on one moment, let me explain the process here, because I want to make sure that everybody understands. So what just happened is the resolution was introduced to the board. When it is first introduced, we don't take comment because now it goes to committee. And when it's in committee, there is now the opportunity for anybody from the public to come and testify on a resolution. So that's your opportunity as everybody who's here to come and speak now that it has been introduced and has gone to committee. Correct, the vote is just for the introduction, it's not for passage of anything, so moving it along in the process.
So, point of order, Madam President.
Yes, my apologies, we cannot take comment from the gallery, I'm apologetic about that, but I do want to make sure that everybody understands the process. We have regularly scheduled committee meetings. If you go on the website for the Board of Aldermen, it'll state when the Legislation and Rules Committee meets, and that is the committee that this resolution was just sent to. So, yeah. So, so, yeah, we, we cannot, alderwoman, we cannot, point of order, what is? Come on. We need order in the chambers, we need order in the chambers. I, I have just asked my staff to please stay after the meeting to, to make sure. Come on. This, this is a warning, or we're going to have to clear the gallery, we have rules on decorum, which requires that, that during full Board of Aldermen meetings, there is not talking from the gallery. Again, my staff, this is my chief of staff right here, he will be staying after the meeting to make sure that everybody understands the process and how you can get involved and come and testify. We do want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard, and the committee process is the way that, that happens. We, we have to operate via rules, and, and our rules do not permit testimony during full board meetings only through committee hearings. And so by this going to committee, it makes sure that everybody who's here today has an opportunity to weigh in. So we will, we will, I will have staff here after the meeting work through with everybody the next steps to make sure that, that everybody is informed of when that, that hearing is. So with that, we will continue along with the agenda. I think we're on Resolution 136.
I'm sorry. Resolution 136, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg and Alderwoman Boyd, solidarity with Israel.
Alderman from the second, you are recognized on Resolution 136.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I request the clerk read the resolution.
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 136, solidarity with Israel. Whereas on October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorists crossed the land border and began slaughtering Israeli and abducting hostages in towns in southern Israel, including children and the elderly. Whereas this heinous assault took place just after the 50th anniversary of the start of the multi-front 1973 Yom Kippur War against Israel. And whereas since August, I'm sorry, October 7, 2023, Hamas has launched, launched over 4,500 rockets into central and southern Israel. And whereas since October 7, 2023, Hamas terrorized, terrorists have killed over 900 Israelis and injured more than 2,600 others. Whereas at least 22 United States citizens in Israel are among those killed by Hamas. And whereas since October 7, 2023, Hamas is directly responsible for the death of hundreds of Palestinians, and whereas Hamas is the United States designated terrorist organization. And whereas Israel is a major non-natal ally and major strategic partner of the United States. And whereas a copy of this resolution will be distributed to the congressional delegation from Missouri. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Honorable Ward of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that the Board of Aldermen stands in solidarity with Israel as it defends itself against the barbaric war launched by Hamas. And that the Board of Aldermen mourns the tragic loss of life and civilian casualties in Israel and Gaza. We further direct the clerk to send a copy of this resolu, to each of the member of the delegation of the 118 United States Congress. Introduce this 20th day of October 2023 by the Honorable Thomas Oldenburg, Alderman of the Second Ward and Honorable Pamela Boyd, Alderwoman of the 13th Ward.
Pursuant to our rule. Alderman from the second, you are recognized on Resolution 136.
I request unanimous consent. Thank you, Madam President, I move that this be moved to the special committee.
There's objection to that, that does not fit within the purview of that committee.
I'll allow you to assign.
Okay, I would, I would ask that it also get assigned to the Legislation and Rules Committee. So there, we, hold on. We're going to have to clear the chambers. It's been moved by the alderman from the second that this is sent to the Legislation and Rules Committee, is there a second on that? It's been seconded by the alderwoman from the first, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 136 has now also been sent to the Rules Committee, and there will be public, and there will be public testimony on that resolution at that time. We may proceed with the agenda.
Resolution.
I'm going to have to ask, if there is one more outburst, then we're going to have to clear, I don't want to have to do, I'm going to ask that we please keep the yelling to a minimum to allow us to, to finish the agenda.
Resolution 137, call on the...
We are, we are asking you, we are as, STL TV, I'm going to place the board in recess.
Thank you, and we are back to our regular scheduled program here with the Board of Aldermen. You know, a lot of emotions around these issues, so appreciate everyone who is in attendance, and certainly will have the opportunity to share feedback, you know, as these resolutions come forward. The president had to step away, she had previous arrangements, so I will be presiding over the remainder of the meeting here. And we do have Resolution 137 before us as we, pardon? The other resolution was referred to, Resolution 136, I believe it was, was referred to the Legislation and, Legislation Committee, which is the same committee that the other resolution was referred to. So since we did vote to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 137, that resolution is now on the agenda. And Alderman from the 14th Ward, you are recognized on Resolution Number 137.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I would ask unanimous consent.
There's been an objection to unanimous consent, Alderman, please proceed.
I would ask that this be sent to the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please note that Resolution 137 will be assigned to the Legislation Committee?
So noted, did he have a, I'm sorry, did we have a second for that?
Pardon?
Did he have a second?
There, yes, I believe it was seconded by the alderman. There, yes. I believe it was seconded by the alderwoman from the seventh ward.
Thank you. So noted.
Courtesy resolutions. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we add the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
Been moved by the alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the alderman from the ninth, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Please dispense with line item 23 announcements.
Tuesday, October 24, 2023, HUD's will have a committee hearing here in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Wednesday, October 25, 2023, Public Infrastructure and Utilities will have a committee hearing here in the Kennedy Room at 3:30 p.m. The Committee of the Whole will have a webinar at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, October 26, Public Safety will have a committee hearing here in the Kennedy Room at 2:00 p.m. Friday, October 27, 2023, full board meeting in the Kennedy Room at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 12th. Warm up.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to announce that Monday, October 23, at 1:30 p.m. at the corner of Newstead and Garfield, we will have an honorary unveiling of the, of a former colleague. We will be naming Garfield honorarily, the Alderman Sam Moore, I want to say it's Parkway, but I'm not sure. But it's going to be a nice event. A lot of people have been invited and we're just going to celebrate our former colleague with his name being unveiled on the, right by the corner of where his house is located. It's Monday, October 23 at 1:30 and the public is invited.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the ninth. Alderman from the ninth.
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to our town hall last night at Barquet. It was a great time and wanted to invite the whole city to the Central West End Halloween Party, not this weekend, but next Saturday, October 28. It'll be an all-day event. So come to Euclid Avenue. It's going to be a great time. We'll have street performers, lots of food and drink, and costume contests.
Thank you. Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to remind everyone that we have a RAMS Settlement Committee of the Whole meeting this 25th. Don't forget that. Mark your calendars. And I also want to remind the city that the application for UBI, Universal Basic Income, opens up on Monday, the 23rd. So make sure you apply. If you're curious about some of that criteria, it is all on the website. But also, you need to be a parent or a guardian of a SLP scholar, a St. Louis Public School scholar, be a resident of the City of St. Louis, and have a total household income less than 170% of the federal poverty level. But again, all that information is online and website and make sure you're ready to apply for that come October 23.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the board. Tomorrow morning in the first ward, there will be two different parks cleanups happening. One is at Sister Marie Charles Park in the Crondelet neighborhood. That starts at 8:45. It's part of the River to Pear Trash Bash Series. Some of you may have other cleanups in your neighborhoods as well. And then the Crondelet Park, Friends of Crondelet Park Group is hosting a cleanup at Crondelet Park from 9 to noon. Hope to see folks there. Thanks.
Any further announcements? Seeing none. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to execute.
Thank you, Mr. President. All members were present this-
Wonderful. Adjournment. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the-
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, October 27, 2023, in the Kennedy Room.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 10th, seconded by the alderman from the seventh, that we adjourn until October 27, 10 a.m. in the Kennedy Hearing Room. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned. Thank you.